So it's three to four, I mean. He usually does ours on Fridays. Because Thursday is dedicated to intel. He does all for New Albany and West Brom.
Now, it takes three or four weeks.
He's always been, he goes. He's.
Here is the agenda. I think I have everything on here that needs to be.
Could you second project up that way? Believe so.
Pretty well detailed.
Yeah, he's good. Yeah.
I've had some questions that I don't have the answer today.
How does that work? All right, hopefully that works. Hi, everyone. Chair person. Well, today you're the chair. I was chair acting chair person.
And then calls meeting order.
Um, I will call the role.
Please call the role.
Help me with your name. Anoska, sorry about that, Mr. Anoska. Mister Hyer.
Here.
Mister Scott.
Here.
Mister Hall.
Here.
Okay. Um Suzanne is the one who actually called this meeting and she cannot be here. I'm hoping that they can watch it on Zoom and Stephen Calvin has. He is not feeling well and tested positive for COVID, so he is also not here and Courtney is out. Um, so I'm gonna hand it over to our. Vice Chair who's a sitting chair and I'll help along the way and so will Catherine and I. Um, the, the questions that I had that were put in front of us to, I'm just gonna say this in. In front, Catherine add to it if you need to. A lot of the questions and concerns that were brought to my attention for this meeting are specific to a project that is still under review. We cannot discuss that. This meeting has been publicly noticed, but it has not been like noticed for the two hundred feet around any project. On any agenda, I just wanna be clear because if we stray into specific project questions, we will end it really quickly.
Procedurally though, I feel like it's kinda cleaned.
Right.
The questions that were issued.
Yes. So I'll just say.
Try to be as vague as possible, but there is procedural things that we can discuss.
Correct.
In other cases.
Absolutely. And so. He has those on a sheet that have cleaned up questions that were too specific. But are now very nicely reworded. Um, and I put together with Catherine on a phone call this morning, a very broad agenda so that we can at least. Um, you know, have an outline to go through and catch on a couple of other things too that also are, you know, like rules and regs.
Yeah, when we post that, let's make sure when we do the, when we get the docs up online, we get this agenda too.
Yes. I just.
With a packet.
Everything's been last minute.
Yeah, that's cool.
Um, okay.
Okay, I think uh before we get into item three, which will really get into any more specifics of. Code and our procedures to kind of review. With uh board members that have been part of the process the last couple of months. Mister Hyer. Uh Mister Hall. To kind of just go through these first seven items. Uh and, and have these as discussion points for today. Uh again, not getting detailed on this case, but. Really kind of question. How we got to where we were. Uh question procedures moving forward on certain um specific. Uh situations that we've never raised upon more sitting up and, and voting. And how we need to, the lanes that we need to stand as support, the rules that we need to follow. Uh and what our options are moving forward on certain situations that have been brought. So in that, let's just. Uh go to our first question that came in, and this was kind of a couple of questions were being sent to Karen. They were compiled, uh kind of cleaned up to make sure they were very generic, general. Not a case specific. Uh the first one was really uh related to the process and the relationship between ARB, BZAP. Uh ARB has been given full jurisdiction for demolition reviews. Is our pretty, I guess, the pretty, whatever word. Uh but in that process, it might. You know, it's, 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 I question that whole process because. That we've had since I've been here over five years now, many cases that have come through. Uh only a few, if any, only one maybe that potentially might have been denied, but then it, you know, the process. Gets appealed, which is part of the process. It was a higher jurisdiction, which is BZAP for us, uh and may or may not be offered. That brings up a lot of questions of, well, what is our real T that we have? Uh what is the real? How do we, how do we navigate moving forward so that we as a board can communicate clearly to? Any appeal process, our position and why we're voting a certain way. And I know there's vehicles for that now, uh one is Karen, of course, the report from staff. Uh one is the minutes and videos that can be watched, but. I'm not sure that may be enough. Or when uh new evidence is also part of this other one item here is presented that we did not see. In a specific case that might be brought to before the BZAP might be related to that. Is that something that we as a board, since it's supposed to be under our jurisdiction? When these are, these are things that need to come back to be reviewed by us. I know that's not in the procedures right now, it's they're allowed to bring new. Evidence to BZAP because they're being, it's being appealed in that case, but I'm gonna let you talk about it. So that's really kind of sums up this item number one. It's really this, you know, a little bit of the frustration of the time and investment we put into the board due to caves. Uh we have very rarely said no to demolition. Uh and we fight for that and we fight, I think, for the right cause of keeping properties that. Uh we feel are secret and, and. When that's, you know, there, there didn't seem to be a ton of. Challenges sometimes on a specific project or not, and, and then in the process of the same thing, one month later, things can be approved or not. And all that effort we put into this. Basted, which then. Tells me. It's a waste of time, then it may be another item, which is why not just put a piece in? Why not just throw straight, why not, and why is demolition even coming through this? So. I'll stop rambling on, please, other board members add before we get too detailed into.
So the way this is set up is you will pose the question and then the city attorney will.
These, these are questions that have come from me and uh Suzanne, and I don't know of any other things worth addressing by anybody else.
No, I think.
This is really the board bringing questions to this meeting to start this conversation more in depth, so that we can then, I think, plan. A course of action for this board moving forward. Uh things that we wanna see, things that we wanna do, potentially working with council with, with city on. On, on ways to improve the system to better. You know, support the process that we currently know. Is the idea.
Right.
So, and I think it's, there's, there's a lot, lot in here that we can discuss, I think this. We've seen, we've been frustrated on many different aspects of how. Most frustrating for all of board members is when we're in an, in an actual hearing or the ARB meeting. And we're unclear what we're doing. Meaning we, we can review a thing. But we don't know the process and we have to backtrack, we have to have consulting coming in or. And I think to applicants that's confusing, it's unfair. There's always a situation that maybe it belongs to that, but there's been, and we've, we've paused for an hour or more talking about procedure and. How we should keep moving forward, I think that's, that needs to be remedied on our side and more training. And more understanding of what, what lanes we're in and what's the proper procedure. I think we have, since I've been here for five years. Uh especially the demo where this is chart, there's a graph, there's, there's things that clarify that, but even that. I am trying to get off rails and go too far, too quickly. Uh and I, you know, it's just understanding that procedure so that we all. Can work together to get through that process, so it'll be.
Well, I guess just for clarity and moving through this and the time that we have. Is it possible? To just have some of these uh like yes, no, or this is, this is true, this is not. From these questions, so my, my, the first question for me is. You know. Is BZAP allowed to, on an appeal case, uh are they allowed to see new evidence that we didn't see?
Yes.
And can they have new uh testimony that we didn't hear?
Yes.
Okay. So that was not clear to us, uh has not been clear to us.
This is, you've never had an appeal to them before, to my knowledge, I don't believe we have or have.
Right.
There's never been an appeal from ARB.
Without talking about a specific case, you know. Uh that was not, we were, I, I was not aware of that. I thought that. That an appeal went to BZAP with whatever was presented to ARB and that was it.
Yeah, I. I don't know why you thought that, that's true if it goes to count from BZAP to council, that's true.
I see.
It's not true for other.
Is that written somewhere?
Uh it is, it, it is, it is a general appeal right in the code, it would be a higher advice code in section twenty five oh six.
So when we're writing. Cause we need to write out procedures for ARB, the mayor has encouraged us to write out our own, you know, basically our own guideline sets. For this, we need to make these things clear. Because none of us understand that. Um and maybe it's because we didn't memorize the code.
And we haven't dealt with this specific topic.
Could you explain, I'm sorry. Uh I, I just wanna understand, is it because it's a higher court that they're allowed to?
It's a higher administrative board.
Okay.
So if you. Get, if we get back to the procedures and I tell you the code provisions, which I know is not what you wanna hear, it will put a lot of this in. Better clarity, I think. Uh and Karen could put that back up there if you wanna see the code sections, but I can tell you the way it works and it's been. Karen out lays it out in the beginning of the staff report every time about what the choices are and when you can table and when you can't. And frankly, the city amended the code. Uh as it relates to this board and I, uh if you show me twenty. Twelve twenty three oh seven.
Twenty twenty.
Twelve twenty three oh seven, right there, yeah, no, it was originally amended in, yeah, maybe twenty. I think there was an amendment before that, the sixteen amendment, no, sixteen was one of those passed, so. What, what council did when they adopted the code as it relates to ARB? Was two things, and this is, this has been true in the way that the code has been applied, but there was an amendment as it relates to that. The schedule and when you can table and when you can't. In any case in which there is a conditional use or variance sought. It often requires a certificate of appropriateness in addition to the conditional use or variance. The jurisdiction to decide all three of those things is in BZAP. But. BZAP wants the. Recommendation of ARB when it comes to architecture, they do not perceive themselves as experts in that field, they don't wanna be experts in that field. So if they are the ultimate decision maker. On the certificate of appropriateness, and that's because there's a variance or a conditional use also. Cause that is their jurisdiction. Then it comes to, to ARB first. And then ARB hears it. And it is, it is intentionally scheduled on the city's dock to come to ARB and two weeks later go to BZAP. And in those cases where they are the final decision maker in a case. ARB does not have the ability to table that. Unless. The applicant requests it. And the reason for that is because if they're not gonna get a conditional user variance, the architecture doesn't matter. I mean, that, they need that in order to do what they're asking to do. So um I think there is early on in the process, their. ARB. Historically was able to table those and that's, that was, if you look at oh nine, you can see when that was amended.
Why is that a table and not a continuance?
It is. Uh because the decision is theirs, there's no continuance, the decision is BZAP's, BZAP issues a certificate of appropriateness. BZAP issues a conditional use, BZAP issues the variance, it is their jurisdiction, that's the way the code's written.
But i- if it's in, if it's a recommendation to BZAP. And the applicant. Um requests a table.
You can table it.
Why couldn't they request a continuance? Because it's not in our jurisdiction? A continuance wouldn't be in our jurisdiction.
Request a table, they were pushing a table, they come back at the next meeting to you.
Right, I, I'm trying to clarify the difference between a continuance and a table.
Uh you can call it, i- 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 is when it's remaining in ARB, it's, it's.
Either one.
Synonymous.
Okay.
I mean, there, there's no difference in that word.
Yeah, I mean, I wasn't aware of that.
I thought, I thought one was two dates, but then one.
If you continue, you can table it to the next meeting, what, what staff usually requests is that you. State whether you table it or whether it's continued. Um typically you table it to the next meeting, so they don't have to readvertise. If you can continue it to a date certain, they also don't have to readvertise, typically that wouldn't be the next meeting, maybe it's two meetings away. Um or you can table it to that meeting. What they typically don't want is it to have an indefinite table. Uh because that's, you have to bring it back within a certain amount of time, but if you do that, then when it, when you decide to bring it back, you have to decide at a meeting to bring it back, they have to readvertise if it doesn't come back till the next meeting. So the request is for a date certain, just for those reasons, for those procedural reasons, but whether you call it a table or a continuance. It doesn't matter. But in the code sections themselves. When you look at the meetings and hearings and procedures in. Twelve twenty three oh seven C, it specifically tells you. A little up to Karen, there, there, C. An application requiring a recommendation by ARB, this is, this is, means it's BZAP's jurisdiction.
Right, not demo.
Not demo. A recommendation um to BZAP may only be tabled at the request of an applicant. Otherwise, ARB shall make a recommendation to BZAP for approval, approval of modifications or conditions. Disapproval or remand back to the ARB board, that's laid out in front of Karen's staff report every time. She, she has all of those choices in the front of her staff report.
I don't think we have any question about that, we don't think.
So remand is something that, I don't know.
So remand is when. When you send it to, to BZAP, but you say, we, we're, our, our, our review is not, we want the architecture to come back to us.
And I know that, we've done that many times.
Yes, so that's. No.
BZAP can override that.
They can.
Yeah, but they've never done it.
No, just.
They can, yes, because the jurisdiction is there, because you're a recommender.
Yes, okay.
It's just for BZAP.
I'm gonna never recommend.
They are only a recommend, they are a recommender to council of several things.
Yeah.
Of a rezoning, of changes to the zoning code, all of that, same thing for them, they could say, we want it to come back to us. But it's real, it's only a recommendation, so.
Our recommendation doesn't come back to us, so our recommendation for approval, not, not through anything.
I think that the last, the last BZAP agenda, and the thing I can save the case because it's closed, right?
Yes.
Um is we had exactly that, that, that um. But I'm just saying, last month we, like, and it worked exactly like we wanted it to, because they actually got turned down, declined for that garden. Structure. That we didn't even know what to make of it, we wanted to make sure it had zoning first, so that's what we did, sent it with no recommendation with the. Condition that it. I guess it's not a condition, the recommendation that it would come back, and it would have been sent back.
Yeah. Yes, that is, that, so that is, when you, when you are not the final decision maker, that's what you do.
I get that, okay.
Um and BZAP can choose to do, to your point, BZAP can choose to send it back, they can choose not to, they can, they typically, and Karen would know better about this. Typically, they, they retain jurisdiction to actually issue the certificate of appropriateness, you don't issue it, although they could remand it back to you to issue. Typically, they retain jurisdiction to do that, so it's tied to that variance or condition, or whatever it is.
Well, just why they take two votes, right, they take a, that's why we separate out the facts and findings, right?
Right.
Get the variance and then they, they do the certificate of appropriate separate.
That's right.
They say. Yes to the variance, but we're gonna remand back this certificate of variance to you, they always vote separately on that.
And then you, i- if you say, yes, we recommend a certificate of appropriateness, blah, 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 blah. Typically, that goes back to BZAP and it's just an administrative approval of what you did. Um they could say, and you can recommend the certificate of appropriateness. From a practical perspective, when they do that, sometimes they get separated from each other. And a lot of times you want that certificate of appropriateness tied to the variance. Because it is a special circumstance and people look at historically what people have done and not, and it's just easier for staff and everybody to keep that all together. Uh because they're just, the way that they're labeled and numbered are a little different, so that, that's what happens. In when you are a recommending authority. And it's only when BZAP has the original jurisdiction, when they have original jurisdiction, they have the whole ball of wax. The reason that the meetings are set up the way they are. You, they come to you, applications come to you first. Then with your recommendation at the first meeting to BZAP, but if you say to BZAP, we need to see it again, it goes to BZAP, they agree, whatever, and you see it again, you have it back in two weeks. So it's designed to allow a role to accommodate applicants. In a. You know, in a quick way. Uh and because it's only a recommendation, that's why you don't have the tabling authority in that case. When it comes back to you for another recommendation, same rules are gonna apply, but typically applicants at that point in time stay. You know, cause they, it's, it's in their interest to stay and have you determine that um and not go to BZAP. Because BZAP would really rather have your recommendation than, than. Being out of that, so that's, that's the way that it works, and the reason I say that you look at the code is because in two sections later is the different code.
In short, if it's a BZAP dash twenty four dash twenty three. You're not the final authority, if it's an ARB. You are. That's the short, that's the short bit.
Yeah. So if you go down to um. Uh oh nine, certificate of appropriateness. Um in that line, oh nine C is saying. The board, the ARB, ARB shall review and approve, approve of modifications or conditions or disapprove each such application. An application may be tabled at the request of the applicant or the board. When the board is making the determinate, the final determination on the application. City shall maintain an official record of the board's decision on the application in minutes of the meeting. So if you are the final decision maker on a demolition on an ARB that doesn't have a conditional use. Or a variance in a residential neighborhood, not Main Street, cause you're on jurisdiction over that, then. You have total control, you, you run your proceedings, we don't care about BZAP, we're going to BZAP. An applicant can request table or not table. And you can choose to table it on your own. That also, beginning of the staff report, all of them say that, so um. For, and, and that was also, that was one of the original with the certificate of appropriateness, when they, when the code was amended in twenty. That's why it was amended to state, hey, if it's your application. You do you, table it, run it, whatever you wanna do. But if you're only the recommending authority, you can't hold it up to get it passed. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it does, but. Maybe I'm looking into this too far in the weeds, but. Does, if it, if somebody comes to BZAP because they need a conditional use or variance. Um and they're looking for us to make a recommendation, but we don't make the rec, we don't recommend it. It goes to BZAP. They can go ahead and approve it, right, whether they like your architecture or not.
They, well, they, as Matt was saying, they have two approvals, they approve. The variance and or conditional using or both. But they also approve the certificate of appropriateness, if you disapprove it. They could approve it over your disapproval, or more likely, that part of the application for the certificate of appropriateness, they would remand back to you. That's why, as Matt was saying, they, they, they issue two things, two decisions.
I'm gonna say, so when it comes back to us. They still hold. The final say.
They do.
So.
They always do.
It comes back, but no matter what.
But we have option of making a recommendation, so we already said no. When it comes back to us.
But you're only saying no to architecture, when it comes to conditional use of variance, you cannot make recommendations.
Right, right.
But our recommendation was already issued on the design, and so let's say we do not recommend, we said no.
Yeah.
So it goes to BZAP as a non-recommended.
Right.
They say we approve the concept, but the design has to come back to us. But it comes back to us.
Well, they're not approving their necessarily.
Well, they, they, the variance, whatever they do.
Yes, that's, that's, that has nothing to do with what it looks like.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
Prove the variance.
Yeah.
But the design is unapproved, comes back to us, but we've already said no to the design. If we.
You haven't said no.
We said no to the recommendation.
Right.
Said we do not recommend, so when it comes back to us, and at that point we can say.
Well, no, you didn't say no to a recommendation, cause it wasn't a recommendation, it was just to flat out the applicant, it was an ARB application.
He's talking about the.
He's calling it general, in gen, in general, he's talking about it in general.
Application comes to us for a recommendation, we said we do not recommend it. If you don't like your.
You don't, the certificate, you're not recommending the certificate of.
It's free, it comes back to us, we already said no, and there's no design changes against, we re-review it. Or, or do we say you need to change it before it comes back to us? If we said, if we came to ARB only, and we said, uh nope, we, we vote all said no. And the project gets kicked out and they have to reapply with changes, right? It can't just resubmit the same.
Well, usually it's table.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even remember that ever happening.
Well, it did happen, I mean, it did, it's, well, they did not change it, but I mean, it happened in twenty two hundred, East Maine, they, you said no, you said no to the recommendation. They said, okay, but we gotta get our variances, we gotta work the architecture, right, and then it came back in, in like.
But they brought changes immediately.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That's what I, I'm saying, I don't think it's ever happened that no changes were made, cause like.
If it did, it would probably sit there on your table until changed.
I guess that's what I'm.
Yeah. That was very, you know, I don't, I don't let people come back if they didn't do changes.
Point is, if it was ARB only, and we said no, we voted no on the design.
Right.
The sign was different, and we said, no, they have to be, they're begun.
Right, they have to come back with a new application.
Application, new design.
With the new design, correct.
But when it goes to ARB or DZA. It is, we don't recommend it since our recommendation. They approve the variance, the design comes back to us. Do we accept it with no changes, or do we say it has to change and revert it back to us, is my real question.
Well, it comes back to you and you tell the applicant what you have to do.
Yeah.
And if they ask for, well, we say no, and they reject it, and the whole thing's dead.
Yeah, and they appeal the certificate of appropriateness, it goes back.
Doesn't actually need that.
Because in their decision.
They know, so.
But it'll still go back to BZAP, they can appeal the no.
Yes.
And I did that, they get going.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's fine, that's great.
Yeah.
But I, the issue is, if. If we don't like the doors. And the owner doesn't, you know. Uh just absolutely, you know, wants to do the doors, it's a, it's a hypothetical example.
Yes.
So gets frustrated with us, goes to BZAP, says, I wanna do these doors. BZAP can sit there and say, yeah, I agree with you, go, go, go to your doors. So we just.
Remind us of evidence, said they could.
Yes. Yeah, so we just need to understand that that's our, you know, sounds like that's our process.
I, I'm just worried, the issue is, it's very different, it, it, I think for this board, I'd be interested in a discussion on. Before, after. BZAP gave the, the variances, I'm excited about that case, and the designs coming back to us. That procedurally we would request before it came back to us that the design is updated. And maybe that's.
But when it comes to, here's my experience, and Karen's is certainly broader than mine. But my experience is. When the design comes to you in the first instance, if you don't like it, you're telling the applicant at that time, why?
I know.
What needs to change and what needs to happen? And, and you're recommending against it, and you may say to BZAP specifically, what it is that you don't like about.
Sure, we should.
And then it goes up to BZAP, if BZAP remands it back to me, the applicant already knows. What you're unhappy about. I mean, it's not news to them, right?
I know, but for, for. Again, it's getting a little bit, another reason, but it's, it's procedurally, we've already kind of said, we don't approve the sign, we can't recommend it, we, we didn't. Vote no on the design, we said no, we can't recommend it, we, we said no. Comes back to us with no changes, and we, we have to now hear it again. And I would. Look to procedurally for us, that the design update should have to be. Considered before it came back to us, this is my only. My unique change here is maybe.
Considered by who?
The applicant. The applicant.
If it comes back without any changes, I've warned them upfront, you're gonna get turned down, cause we've already told you. And then you turn down. Okay. I mean, let me tell you, we have implemented, thank you, not even here to hear music. Matt, thanks to Matt, I mean, I've called every applicant for Thursday. You are, you may have something in at five o'clock today, and you, we are done, done, not thinking anything else.
On the city's sake.
Well.
Well, really more for.
Let me also say that your rules and regulations govern when they have to have it in to be considered. They already do.
I know.
And in fact, at the la, we talked about that at the last meeting, when they said they came in at the eleventh hour, I said they don't have to consider it, because it didn't. Come in. In enough time, the board could choose not to consider it.
Correct me by long.
That guy even said, and they should be here to testify about it, so the board can answer questions. And the board chose not to, to go ahead and hear it anyway, and to let them proceed without the expert there. My view is, every time they submit an expert report to you from a legal perspective, that expert ought to be there to talk to you about it and explain their decisions and findings. But historically, at least what I heard at that hearing is that's not what the board is required, which is within your discretion not to do. Um so those are, those are things that, that can be done. Um and I think in your, I did bring the rules, which Karen did put on her note, they need updated because the code was amended, they're from twenty twenty and the code was amended in twenty.
I have everything up here, so.
So I guess.
So they.
Did you, so, so with that in mind. You. You, so Catherine, my legal perspective, please.
Yep.
Um. Could they not heard it at all because new, or could they have just kicked out the testimony or the evidence that was submitted? Within the last week, because technically our code, I believe, says four weeks. Anything submitted four weeks. It has to, the application has to be submitted four weeks prior to the meeting.
Right.
And we don't, you don't have the obligation now. We're generous with most residents, I've taken the stance of like two, everything has to be in two weeks, right? And then.
So what the rules say is, and that's ordinance is silent on this, what the rules, what your rules say is. Same thing, application four weeks, it mirrors the code. There is also provision, the rules that say, if eh if there's any, in the case of modifications to tabled applications. Modification shall be submitted at least two weeks prior to the next regular meeting. And I think there there's also a provision that says any new information has to be submitted two weeks before. I think we staff treats that as you have to have it in two weeks before the meeting, or we're not gonna consider it.
That's what I was trying to.
Yeah.
Now, we've now, we are now doing one week. Because the the reality is I do my final post.
That was our biggest.
Right.
Well, and we had.
Right, right. I mean, I just think as long as it's like the Friday before.
And I think if applicants know that clearly, that's one thing, cause I remember at the the hearings on twenty-two hundred. Um just as an example, the developer was bringing stuff in, really to you. Uh on on short notice.
I've seen many. Branders were brought out.
Right, and they're bringing, you know, things in for the first time then, and a lot of members of the public complained about that. And the board chose to hear it and said, this is our routine, there are always all these changes, and we go ahead and listen to them. But you can, as a board, choose not to do that, in your discretion you can, or you don't have to, cause it's your rules. Historically, the board has done that, but if you choose not to. You know, and and your rule amendments, we can put that, just make it a hard fast rule, and. There are a lot of jurisdictions that I practice in where if you're, you're, you know. After they have a cutoff at noon a certain day, and if you're five minutes late, they're not taking it.
Okay.
And and I.
But that's not the way Nexly likes to do things.
City.
Nexly is a friendly city.
Right, yeah.
So if you're saying it's not due, then someone brings something like, as a board, whoever's chairing them, that we we will not accept this because of.
And it won't be a surprise anymore, at least for the first, probably six months to a year, I'm gonna call everybody and make sure they know. Friday, because I want it to be out there that this is just, you know, I don't want anybody.
Well, and when you get it.
We have made, we've bent over backwards on purpose.
Mm-hmm.
Under the leadership at the highest levels to take anything anytime, because we're, we pride ourselves on being user friendly. We've been burnt too many times. We're not doing it anymore.
To be switched on that.
It is.
So I told. I told all my staff members, I told everyone that I'm working with, make me the bad guy. Okay, if you see a resident, you're like, why aren't you here, Matt, call Matt and their, call, call the office. I'll be the bad guy, and if they wanna go above my head, then he can work that out with them. But if you make me the bad guy, I'll listen to everyone's. Sob stories and and the things and so.
Just really clear and communicate clearly to the city, and then it's applicants that.
Right, but you guys are gonna, you you guys, I'm sure will hear it. I'm sure you'll hear it at some point, and just say, if you have a problem, call Matt. That's fine. Um I do wanna go with B, can you go to twelve? Sorry, I'm I'm not trying to hijack, but twelve thirty oh nine, twelve twenty-three oh nine B. And this is where I was thinking, you know, if there was new stuff that you got, it says within. However, the second, however, that, the ARB may for good cause waive the four week advance filing requirement. But they, all applications requiring review shall be made to the board at least four weeks, so.
Talking about the initial filing of the application.
Yeah, so then this hypothetical one that we may or may not, that they may have may have just heard, like if they had new, they did file it within four weeks, but if they had new.
Evidence.
Evidence with a week to go, is is it in the board's purview to say, sorry, we're kicking you to the next month's meeting?
That's why I was saying there. The board was saying, yeah, it's not a table, but modifications typically, we would say two weeks. You can't submit a modification and expect the board to hear it. You know, greater than two weeks before the, less than two weeks.
And that's a staff call, that's not necessarily a code.
Well, it's in the board rules. So when you, and then Karen has on her notes of things to look at board rules. And so you, it can also be published in the board rules, because. Lawyers, of people like me who are used to going to lots of different boards and lots of different places. One of the first things we go find is the board rules. There are some boards that will say, we're not gonna start hearing an application after eleven o'clock, and think your rules say that now. Um because during COVID, we were on the phone until two, three in the morning a couple times, which was not super fun. But um the board, some boards have a rule and says, if you, I don't care if you're on the agenda, if it's, you know, after. Ten o'clock, we're not hearing anything new, or eleven o'clock, and I know BZAP has that rule, I don't remember if ARB does. But those are things that you can put into your rules. And I, and one of the things I would suggest, um Matt and Karen is, sometimes those rules are hard to find on the web. But maybe if you do, maybe if you put a link on like the ARB. Like what the boards and commissions site, when you go to the ARB page and it lists all the members, you can put a hot link there about the rules of the board. That way people can easily find it. I've had lawyers come and say, I can't find the.
I think it is there, but I think it's two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
It's hard to find.
I gotta get through budget season, and my friends get counting right now.
No, I get it. I'm just sitting in the log.
My next goal is the website, so that that's there. My next goal is our website.
Yeah, it's a long game thing. One is to get the rules updated, two is to get them posted where they can easily be found, because it also then bolsters staff. And the director, when they're saying, no, our rules say this, we don't need a, you don't need an ordinance for that. You adopt rules, you say this is what we're doing. And what you need is, you know, the director and staff to enforce it. There may be exceptions, and that's this. Is sort of the exception to the four week rule, was what if somebody is, you know. They're dead day late, and we've got room on the agenda, sometimes we're better off to get it on the agenda than wait for the next crazy agenda after. It gives the board, uh staff, some authority to make, have a little bit of discretion. You could do the same thing with a two week rule or a one week rule, whatever you choose, but.
Some of them always should be a little flexible.
Yes.
You know, problem is when it's one hundred percent flexible, we're getting designs printed and brought to meetings to look at.
Well, we're not doing that anymore.
No, I know. So I was gonna say, that's, that, cause then they don't, they just bring stuff, like, here, I've got a new.
Well, and from my perspective, as a, as a board member, I've been left to lots of board, I've been a board member on lots of different boards. I want to have my materials at least the weekend before my meeting. Because it's the time when you have to take a minute out of your busy schedule and and focus.
And I need to hear from all of you that that is good, because in our rules and regs, it says at least two weeks before the next meeting. But my inclination, cause like, I'm working with, right now, something on your agenda for, I mean. Whatever, vaguely, that I, it's a tiny project that I'm working with the homeowner, and I'm, I like being able to work with him up. Till the Friday before the meeting, but not gonna work with them up until the meeting anymore.
What would be helpful is, cause especially, you're getting things uploaded really early.
Right, it's been uploaded since, for four weeks before.
Um, that's great, but if I look at things early. Send comments, and then things are continuing, just please continue to communicate some.
Oh, I have been doing that.
And then just just make sure, hey, if there's small changes, this is gonna.
Yep. And what I will always do. Is still send you that Friday email that I always send to confirm attendance. And I'll give you the link to the link, to the website again, even though you can just go there, but I'll give you the link again and say, this is the final. Yeah, no, I know you do, and I will always include it, but um, but just know that, like, it's not gonna feel that much different for you. You just have to know that you can go on there, um when it, four weeks before, cause we're gonna toast it. I started looking through it, it's great, because they familiarize with. And you'll also be huge differences from people I've worked with. You know, between then and this, and the week before, but the week before email that you get on usually Fridays at five thirty or six. Whatever, whenever I've finished all up, it's not gonna feel any different. It's just gonna be, that's it.
And I wanted that because I just remember as a contractor, like when I knew the plans way ahead of time, and then a small addendum comes in, and you guys love to. Put out your bulletins and your denims, you architects, um. I could at least, like, I could at least, like, narrow down the change, like if it came in, you know, last second, like, okay, I'm right where I'm going. But if if you have the whole picture in your mind early, like, three weeks ahead of time, and then something comes in, like, okay, this is the. I've already reviewed this, and you can see a change quicker when, at least for me, that's that's the way I worked.
Challenges with review times.
I know.
If I'm traveling, then I'm not gonna review anything, and it's like, it's unfair to the applicant, who is not reviewing these things, so it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, I love where you guys are going, and I think it's.
Is is a week before okay with everybody? Yes.
Yeah, if I review.
Cause this says two weeks, but I feel like. It it just limits my opportunity to work with people.
Reality is, is that we're also busy that we're not gonna be finding time to review this stuff two weeks in advance.
Problem of forgetting, but I looked at.
The reality is, is we're gonna set aside time wherever we can fit it in at the last minute, before we come, because we're just so busy in our private practice.
Yeah, I mean, what, whenever you look at it, you look at it, but I just wanna make sure you're okay with the week before. Yeah.
Uh so one of these applications comes back to us, so they they either a demolition or uh. They uh, the variance gets approved, and it comes back to us, remanded back to the ARB. What is that fall then? That the review of that design fall under solely our jurisdiction, and we have the right to table? Or is it only the applicant can still table that, because it's a BZAP application?
No, it's not a BZAP.
At that point, it's not back to.
When they remand it back to you. They, it is your application, they just made a decision on. Uh I mean, your decision was, and let let me back up. When you say communicate the decision, there were findings and facts and conclusions of law. In detail, in segmented parts, if you might remember, while we're gonna say this first, we're gonna talk about this first, we're gonna talk about this first. So that you could parse out and they could understand your reasoning, so when it goes up to them. They have that, along with, they list, they get an entire record, they get a whole thing of the application, all the exhibits, everything. They get the whole package, and they also get links to the video, and they watch it here. So when they go up to them, it's not, they're not listening to it in the back end, it's their obligation to do a complete review of what you did. And then they listen to any additional evidence that's presented, and then they um deliberate. And and decide, so when it, when it comes back to you, they don't have jurisdiction or jurisdiction to get appropriateness. Because it's, there's no variance or conditional use attached to that, that's your jurisdiction. They appealed the issue of demolition to you, because you didn't issue a certificate of appropriateness, because you denied. So they appealed the certificate appropriateness. They overturned that, the decision on the demolition, saying, no, a certificate of appropriateness should be issued. But that's not our jurisdiction. It comes back to you, now it's still your application.
Yeah, you have an application that's under fully our our jurisdiction.
Yes, right, and in fact, when you you never actually considered, I mean, I know there were presentations on it. But in a decision-making role, you never actually considered the new design, because you never had to get there, because you denied demolition. So the new design technically wasn't a merits decision for the board. So you get it remanded back to you, it's still wholly within your jurisdiction. It is not in BZAP, and they are happy it's not.
As a board, we have the right to table it, cause it's.
And that's if the BZAP remands it back to them, right? So they have first right of refusal, essentially. They could also just. Do a certificate of appropriateness.
They could have.
For the first time, right? But they're giving up their, they're giving up their, their first right of refusal, right? If it comes. If you guys say no first, and then they, it goes to them, and they say yes to the variance, no to certificate appropriateness. Then they could remand it back to you, they're giving up that uh authority to grant certificate appropriateness.
Well, no, not in this case, because, and the reason is because. They, the certificate of appropriateness, that I guess, yes, because you have to get a certificate of appropriateness in order to demolish. And they didn't get one for that, so. They, they deny, they reverse that decision. But the decision, because it's in residential district. That the house is in a residential district, the exclusive authority of the architecture on a residential structure in a residential district. Is ARB, if there's no conditional use of variance.
Okay.
So what they did was they turned, they overturned the the approval of the, or the denial of the demolition, and say, no. Uh the demolition should be approved, given the facts and evidence and the standards in the code. But the design is still exclusively within the authority of ARB, because. There's no variance, there's no conditional use, it's not in the Main Street district, it's not in a commercial district. All of which would have vested in in BZAP. But since none of those factors are present, the only thing present is, it's a house in a residential neighborhood. Exclusive authority for that is with ARB. So they remand it back and they go.
When they're, when it's. Comes in, uh and uh. The applicant is called for a vote, so can we table that to request additional outside engineering? So we have, we have the right.
To take.
Cause take demos under our jurisdiction.
Yes.
We can take with, because we're we're voting on that, uh it's not part of a BZAP recommendation, it's.
Yeah, uh as long as there's no variance or conditional use.
And that's a procedure that we've already put in place, that we can, uh we have resources allocated, so the board says we'd like to hire a structural assessment.
The city, the city hire.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a provision in the code that allows staff. That allows you to request it, allows, yeah, allows, yeah, yes.
That's good enough, if we, we need to call that.
Which is why we don't wanna change, I'm sorry.
And other expert witnesses. It's not just an engineer, we could call in other expert witnesses.
Yeah, any, any.
Historic preservation consultants.
Be helpful in, I think the coast is something like that's helpful in making your determination. There's some standard. But it's um not a high bar.
No, that's great, I I get, and I read it, so it reminded me of the mission.
Yes.
And this does not, to me, this also applies to like roof replacement, so slate roof replacement.
Sure.
We can, we should be able to table that, so that we can call in another expert witness, that the city can hire to assess the condition of the slate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, slate roof replacement.
I mean, I think that. The shake roof.
Yeah.
Right.
That's not a BZAP, that's not a condition you should bring, that's, that's your authority.
But it's a good con, it's a good comparison, because it's our authority to like demolish, it's a much, you know, narrower.
The applicant comes with grandma, and everything, and there's, it's leaking, they got all these great photos, you know. Uh as an architect, my question always is, is that the slate's fault, or is that the flashing? You know, which typically is something that gets replaced every fifteen, twenty years on any roof. Um. That puts up a flag for me that it needs to be tabled, so that we can have another expert come in. Besides a local asphalt roofing company who was there representing the applicant.
Independent expert.
Right, which is a conflict of interest to me, unless they're just there as a witness and not as the applicant, like the contractor. I know, the this whole thing about conflict of interest for who's representing the applicant is another meeting. Because it really is a problem. I think it's a problem. I mentioned that in another hearing that we had, but. Um anyway, go ahead. That was all, I just wanna make sure we have the ability.
And I hear you on that. I I understand what you're saying. With a demolition.
Right, with a demolition to have the architect of the new design actually representing the applicant.
And benefit from it.
And they're benefiting from the demo, yeah. That is a conflict of interest.
You're you're true, don't you, right? Yeah.
We do quarterly.
Yeah, that should be a big item, have the city attorney there for that discussion.
Uh moving on to number four. All demos come to ARB, that's a standard policy, so this question is a little, I think that the the thinking here is. You know, to include a variance, for any sort of variance in the new design, is that I might be kicking these happen. I think the challenge here, the the overall. Position of the question is. Why are we voting on those? But this is part of the process, so it's.
I mean, I think it's happened twice that I can remember.
I I know, but it's, it's, but the more they know about it, the more potentially, the first meeting, I'm gonna be all about the. I'm gonna dig it up.
Boom.
And I'm just.
I mean, I I just wanna say my piece for this, cause I I I hear you, but I've been asked this a million times, and I think, like, we live. We learn anecdotally, and now we, we all are very aware that we will just say, no, you're gonna be tabled until you bring us this. Next information, and we'll make it clear. I mean, it's, it's something that we have to learn it that way.
We can table, we have a lot of to say, hey, we're gonna table.
Right, but there's, there is no, there is no body. And Catherine, this is your area, but there's no body of a a quasi judicial or otherwise. In the city that can't be appealed at some level.
No, that happens also.
So.
And I'm, I'm okay with that, uh personally, I know.
Is ARB quasi judicial?
Yes.
At for specific kinds of decisions or all decisions?
Um I cannot think of a decision where you're not.
Okay, can we go into executive session? If we're quasi judicial.
So the, it's not actually, there's a distinction. It's not actually executive session, it is. Um, when you're in a quasi judicial proceeding. Where, you know, there's an issue of standing, do you have standing, do you not, who's the applicant, who can talk? In those situations, what the courts would say is. That is not a public meeting. Subject to sunshine law, it is a public hearing. On in a quasi judicial proceeding, just like I go, my example would be, I go to the Court of Appeals. There's oral arguments, anybody can come, they can't talk, they can just listen. And at that point in time, the board adjourns and privately discusses. Because it's not a public meeting, it's a court proceeding, quasi judicial is like a court proceeding, like when I go to the trial court. And I'm presenting evidence, there are people in the audience, they don't get to speak if they don't have standing.
Because we can privately discuss the cases.
You can deliberate decisions. Um, not in public.
We did not know that.
Is, is this after?
It is very uncommon, it is very.
So let's say. Let's say there's a contentious.
Not here in Jefferson Township, that happens all the time.
Yeah.
Let's say there's a contentious. Project or whatever and. We need some time to think, so you're saying after it's presented.
You could just table it and think about it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to deliberate to think about it.
Many times I'm sitting there that I want to ask, you know, even if one of these folks, but I still. I don't wanna do it publicly. You know, I wanna go behind closed doors and see where they are with this because I just, I value their opinion. Um, and.
I'm afraid that will happen all the time.
Kitchen, in the kitchen.
No, the kitchen is where we meet, but I was under the impression that you do that, you deliberate in executive session only with the attorney to ask procedural questions and. Discuss how to go from, like if you're stuck. Like, I'm not allowed to be in those, I'm, am I?
You're not.
Right.
You're not.
Unless she's invited in.
Uh, no, you cannot be.
It's, so you're saying it's, it's a, it's a private deliberation versus an executive session? With executive session, when I was on council, we could invite, if we announced, we could invite so and so to come in.
Right.
We're inviting Catherine Cunningham to come in to.
Because it's a legislative proceeding, not a quasi judicial proceeding. That's the difference, if it's a legislative proceeding, you're subject to sunshine law.
Right.
And you, in order to deliberate. In executive session, you have to qualify under the state statute. For a reason, if you, if, when you go into executive session in council. Mark usually reads them, reason, we're, we're going into executive session to discover, to discuss a real estate contract, we're going into executive session to get advice and. A legal counsel pending your threatened litigation, we're going into executive session to discuss employing that, we're going into, because state law would say. When you're a legislative body to go into executive session, you have to qualify to do so. You can't just choose to go into executive session, can't do it.
Kinda.
Since anyone applying for us?
So what for you, this, I, the sunshine law applies to you too, for sure, it applies to you, but. When you're in a, the difference is, which is hard for people to understand, when you are in a quasi judicial proceeding. Like BZF is, when they're hearing an appeal from you, they're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. When they deliberate, they just adjourn the meeting and go into private deliberations because they're sitting as judges. They're not sitting as legislators or recommenders or considering power seats or anything like that.
They're not doing that in public, they're gonna go.
They're gonna go to. Well, the meeting is, well, it's adjourned.
So. Hypothetically, there's. A list of applications for the evening. And number three. The board chair announces that we're gonna go into private deliberation, the meeting is then adjourned. And there might be six applications still left.
And the meeting is re- re.
And then the meeting is readjourned when we come back.
We can move in there here, talk here, and then go back in there.
You probably go to Ben's office, or if there's a bunch of people, we would, you gotta go to his office.
It is very uncommon to do, but you can do it. And they, you know, triple the length of your meetings.
But if it was, if it was.
Tabled.
If, if, I mean, if it's a demo and we know that we have full jurisdiction. And we want to deliberate privately, we can adjourn and then come back and continue. For something that is as contentious as uh a demolition.
What?
This makes sense to me now, because the council, when we had TC, we had the TCV thing, we, we did, we adjourned. And privately deliberated, it wasn't executive, remember that, when we. The TCD, the community builders, the, the.
Application.
Anything.
Yeah, yeah, on Livingston.
Yeah, we were arguing.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Yeah, this, because it was a conditional use, which is a quasi judicial proceeding.
And we deliberated privately.
Yeah, well, most of them don't. Half the lawyers in the world don't know that. I hear them say that, I'm going into executive session, I'm like, no, you're not.
Yeah.
Cuz if you're going into executive session, you have to qualify under the statute, and this, the, the courts look at, just look at it.
Guys.
Oh, sorry.
Guys, this is a Zoom recorded meeting for the public and there's multiple conversations, so it's gonna be super.
Sorry.
Hard, no, 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 I'm just trying to make sure that I'm not gonna get the calls and Matt's not gonna get calls like.
For meeting us.
Yeah.
So officially request, what, so if we're, we we potentially can call uh. Are the session ones? It's not the executive session, why do you call it?
Yeah, just, you just end the public meeting and deliver, but you cannot. Have anybody else other, other than legal counsel, you can't have anybody else in there because.
Which is fine.
They cannot influence your decision, it's an independent decision.
Other certain cases where we, there's, at times, there's times where we're all going back. Where there's definitely an, an open discussion about parts of the project or. It could be beneficial to adjourn, come into a private room, have that deliberation and discussion about it.
My, my sense is that. We would do that adjourning in, you know, extremely limited conditions, especially. In my mind, if we have a contentious applicant.
Yeah.
Who is continually interrupting us, continually walking up to the counter in our faces or doing something, I would, I would immediately. Call for a private deliberation.
Can any work, call for that?
The chair has. The chair has.
Well, I think you need to be careful about that, because like. The, the, what you're saying, I mean, and I, I think that's the chair's responsibility to get right under control. That's not a reason to call, uh, I mean, this.
That's not a reason to call it.
That's not a reason to call to deliberate, a great reason to call to deliberate is when there's confusion about the procedure. Like we've had in recent past. But I don't think of this man, I don't think misbehavior of an applicant is, in my opinion, not, and not a good reason. I think the board chair needs to be very strong and, and, and if we had to, you call the police button, you know, I, I don't think that's.
Well, no, I, I guess what I'm saying is that. There are, there have been applications where I, I don't necessarily feel threatened, but I feel like I, my, my. Ability to make a clear judgment, you know, and and of, and make a vote has been um. Has been compromised. Uh, and, and I wanna make sure that my mind. Clearly understands what's happening here, uh, because it's, it's just feels chaotic.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
At, you're confused, a question about procedure, you'd like to consult our attorney privately rather than, like, that was just. There were too many, okay.
Right.
No, it's also a good reason to table the application.
Right.
I mean, because that, that does for the applicant, either they're gonna. Settle down or, you know, they're gonna.
Right.
I mean, there are a lot of ways to manage a meeting, even if, you know, it, it's getting sort of, feels like it's getting out of control.
Of course, they got attorneys.
Yeah, they're doing a good job. At here, where this, where, where I wanted to step away, go behind the scenes and, and talk to fellow board members. And that's it, all the other times we've had complicated projects come in. Perfectly fine, there was, you know, there's, there's nothing there that I could. You know, everybody had comments, they kind of pushed the thing along, I thought we were all aligned and so forth. But just, you know, in one case where, you know, something came before us and it got a little hairy on the edge of us, it would have been nice. Step back, take a breather on it.
Yeah, and I would also say, when you are deliberating among yourselves publicly. It is beneficial to applicants who may have to be amending an application or trying to satisfy the board. More so, I think. With architecture than, for example, BZF. They're looking at a conditional use, they're looking at a variance, it's much more, they have. Objective standards in the code that they run through, that they apply to the property. When you do architecture, it's, to me, it's. Less objective, it's more subjective and that makes, from my perspective. The need to deliberate, it seems to be a little bit less than when you're applying specific standards to specific facts. Um, you're collaborating among your fellow board members, the applicant is hearing what you're saying about. The project and what, you know, people are thinking they can and can't do, maybe coming up with their own ideas. And there's a, there's a, to me, a greater value at ARB to that, and BZF. You know, you sound like they privately deliberate a lot, they never do.
No.
The only time that, this is the first time they ever have on an appeal, it was the first appeal they've ever had, it's the first time they ever did. When it's, an appeal comes up to city council, they also choose to deliberate privately. Because they got a big record to discuss that they don't necessarily wanna hear at a meeting, because they've got, they wanna. Talk among themselves about the code standards and what the board's doing, they're deliberating, you know, differently. Than, than you, so I would generally, just because of the nature of an ARB board. It, it's very rare that we see uh dealers, not that you shouldn't do it ever, but it's very rare to see it.
So.
All of those reasons.
So I would like to ask a question about. When something is appealed to BZF, a case is appealed to BZF that was in our full jurisdiction. And BZF goes into private deliberation, comes out with, you know, a, a, a reason. Why they are overriding the ARB decision. And in that decision, there is a false statement. If that happens, does ARB have any appeal at all?
No.
So they can make that decision based on false information. Or make a false, make a false statement.
They, they will make a decision.
Right.
And if then only people with standing, which is not a decision maker, just that's like saying. Somebody appeals a trial judge in the court of appeals, and the court of appeals says something, the trial judge says, well, no, that one, right? The trial judge can't then take it to the Ohio Supreme Court and say, I don't like what the court of appeals did to my decision. Because it's the parties who have standing, right, the applicant. Anybody who appeared and spoke at the hearing who had standing, those are the only people. Who, you, when you're a decision maker, you are, I mean, it's your responsibility to listen to the evidence that comes before you. And to make a decision based on whatever standards there are in a code. Uh, however, that, that you believe the evidence supports, that's before you, not to make a case for or against. An application, that's not, you're the decision maker, I mean, if people went into a trial court and. The judge had a propensity to view as things a certain way and just decided the way he wanted, regardless of what happened. It's not good. Staff cannot, and, well.
I'm just saying, so she's not the decision maker, but she, there's, you know, evidence that was not brought to this board. Then have, have now come the light, we can't appeal it, I get that, totally agree with that. But there's no prosecutor, let's say, that's, that's, can say, wait a second, we're gonna appeal that because maybe prosecutors can't appeal, I don't know.
So they, yes, there are, uh. I don't, I don't know about internal, there, the case law would say that generally a city cannot, no, that's not true. Uh, township or a county typically cannot appeal the decision of its own board. However, if a municipality has charter provision or a stat, an ordinance that says they can, they could. Typically, they were not, and in this case. It would be an appeal to city council, and I don't think anybody would do it, but normally, it's only the, the. Parties who appeared and who have standing, that's what standing's all about.
But where, but, but then where's the city standing? It's only one, it's applicant standing, there's no other, there's no other side, it's just the, the approval, the people giving decisions. Right, so there is no counter applicant.
Well, there's, there's.
Advocate has all the, all, all the cars and there's no counter appeal process. And in, unless there was somebody negligent, maybe the BZF could return something.
Well, if somebody appeared and opposed or presented opposing evidence, that person would have standing, assuming they had standing to appeal. In addition to that, you have to decide whether they meet, in your opinion, whether they meet code or not, which you did. Based on the evidence before you, at least in the demolition case. Um, it's just that when on appeal. When another board considered it, they didn't see it the same way.
So.
And I, I, I respect that.
But that takes me back to my question, and again hypothetically, if BZF makes a statement. That says, the reason why we're overturning this decision by the ARB is because they said this color was blue. But in reality, if you go back to the hearing and listen to the recording, it's, we said the color is red. Is that a legitimate?
Not for you.
Overturn, that's a legitimate overturn. Even though they said that, you know, something that we didn't say.
Of course, do that all the time.
Wow.
That's the world I live in.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you, that's an important question, I really.
Yeah.
So, so here's a question, uh, we, uh, hypothetical case, we do not approve a. A demolition, if we were going to approve demolition, part of demolition approval is based on the purpose of the new design.
Right. No, not necessarily, to, to me, no. The demolition, the, the demolition statute has its own standards.
It does.
And you either meet those standards or you don't. But if you're gonna demolish, you can't get a demolition permit. Until you have an approved design.
Yeah.
Which becomes, which is still our full jurisdiction.
Right.
AS ARB.
It's a certificate of.
We can table, we can do a, we can do a date certain. We can make different kinds of judicial requests.
Is, you know.
That's what, that's.
How does BZF prove something that we haven't approved that sign up?
They did.
They didn't approve the demolition, they approved the certificate of purpose, the permit won't be issued until the.
Right. That's why they. Right, they cannot get a demolition permit.
But could. Okay, fast forward.
Yes.
Um. If it becomes an ARB applicant, well, it's still a BZF application.
No, it's a remand to their application, so it's their original.
If they don't approve, okay, on a demolition. In a case.
Yes.
BZF said, yes, you can demolish.
Yes.
Now to get a demolition permit. They're not presenting a design that is appropriate for demolition.
They can't get a demolition permit under your code unless they have a, an approved design, replacement design. Under the building.
Right, let's say they don't get, let's say they don't get an approved, I think you know more of this, let's say they don't get an approved design by ARB.
Right.
Can they appeal to BZF?
Yes.
That was, yeah.
Anything, anything BZF has on can be appealed, because it's.
Because, let me, let me, sort of, to put it in context. A, you know, what? Demolition and zoning are the exercise of the police powers of a local government, that's what they are. Um, but a property owner has constitutional property rights, which is sort of the rub that always comes in this. So they have the right to use their property in a certain way. You've got a property owner who has, at, at least at this point in time, in the city of Bexley, the right to demolish an existing structure. On a piece of property. That same property owner has a property right to do something else with that property. And so then the question is, what is that, it's being remanded to you to make a decision. On the architecture for whatever the replacement structure is, you have the jurisdiction to do that. But they, there, you have to balance that, you know, whatever it is that you're gonna do, against the fact that they have constitutional rights to develop their property, but also.
Good, I think you should.
They should.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, can I ask a clarification of language, the property owner, if they're, if they get turned down by ARB for a new design? They can appeal to BZF to get that design approved?
Yes.
Okay.
A design approved, maybe not that one, but a design.
And then BZF, it, it's their full jurisdiction at that point.
Yeah.
As an appeal body.
Right, as an appeal body.
Which should, should be there.
Yeah.
We can argue.
Right.
And if they say no, then they could appeal to council.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't expect that ever to happen, but it's good to know.
But it could happen.
Yeah, the, the could, the could happen is important for me, so I understand. The framework here, the parameters.
It actually could happen, and I'm not even talking about any.
It actually could happen, and I'm not even talking about any specific case.
Yeah.
I just think it could happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the, another question, this kind of segues into, um. You know, ARB's jurisdiction to, on design, right?
Yeah.
That a homeowner, and I, I've never seen this before, but we've certainly hinted to applicants that we would like. A particular design to reference the original structure if it was demoed, right? And, but I'm not even gonna use mimic, because I want to, if I say reference. Then, um. That is something for the applicant to consider. They don't have to, there's nothing in our. In our ARB, there's no ordinance that says that that is one of the standards. Right.
Same earlier, well, if the majority, this is, it has to be this style, this.
Right, that's right.
We don't have.
No, and, and I'm, I'm glad we don't have that. At the same time, you know, it may be at some, some, you know, design that comes up that all five voting members are saying, look. You know, because of the situation on this property, it just, that's what we feel needs to happen here. That it needs to reference whatever, you know, um, for whatever the history of the property or, you know. Importance of the former design or whatever it is. The applicant can still say no.
Right, they can appeal BZAP and BZAP could affirm you or reverse.
Right.
And I have a feeling that would be exactly the rare case that would be appealed.
Right.
Yeah.
And so.
BZAP doesn't have to disagree with you, they could agree with you entirely.
Right.
And affirm what you did.
Right.
I think that on architectural likelihood is. They may.
Very well, I wanna, uh. You have another thing, Bill, I wanna get back to something real quick.
Yeah, cuz we got too far, fourteen minutes.
It's a sunshine thing, because I don't know if we all know, but we were talking about privately deliberating, publicly deliberating. So sunshine laws or in just like in, in referencing round robin sort of.
This, yeah.
They can't, so Bill can't talk to Pete. About a project outside of ARB. Right, because there's, there's rules that say, you know, a quorum is seven, or a quorum is five. So I know on council, like, I couldn't talk to more than two people, but I could talk to two people. But we ran into things, it was like, Jen, Jen, have you talked to two people? Robinson, yes, no, I can't talk to you on that, Matt, so I had to go to somebody else.
No talking at all between board members.
And that's what I have heard.
Sorry.
So I want to clarify, so there's, they cannot, it's different sunshine laws, they cannot talk to any other board member. Whereas when I was on council, that's a legislative body and they're quasi judicial body.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're now.
Council can, that here's, this is why people are often confused. Because council can sit in a legislative. Administrative or quasi judicial proceeding.
Yes, I remember that.
All three of those. When they are in a quasi, sitting in a quasi judicial capacity. The rules that you're describing, absolutely, in sunshine law, you can't have a majority of members in a prearranged meeting to. In sunshine law, that's just a different thing, that's a public meeting thing, cuz then you have a public.
That's like a legislative, that's like a legislative body, when an act, and now I remember this, and I answered my own question. Cuz when Mark Fisher would say, you're quasi judicial, you cannot talk to any other council member, and you cannot talk to the public. You're a judge, you can't, outside of, of private deliberation.
Yes, so your deliberation has to be all of the members who are making the decision, have to be present typically, or don't vote.
Makes sense.
And you can only talk about the, the deliberations that you are doing and nothing else. No other discussions, no policy discussions, no, you know. Any of those discussions. And that, and then you can, even if you, if any decision that you're made, you make, has to be announced publicly. Outside of that deliberation of all of the members present, you cannot privately talk among yourselves, you cannot email back and forth. You can't do any of that, typically, I'm involved in all those deliberations. And all communications are with me and then out to other members, again, same thing with council. Council sits in deliberations, that is in a quasi judicial case, same thing. All the members present, they can talk about what they heard, ask questions about what applies, do all of that. In those cases, we memorialize something in writing, typically, it doesn't come till the next meeting. And again, they, like you, or like BZAP did, they announced the decision. They've had their deliberations, council used to, to make comments about their decisions and then over time, I think they've gotten away from doing that.
Yeah, we just, we didn't.
They just accept the, the decision, so that's the way that process works, you cannot have private conversations. Outside of majority of the members. Um, just like you can't, you know, same thing, we had the discussion about. I think Mark presented this year at the hearing, or at the board and commission meeting, you can't. You know, do private investigations of applications before you, you're limited to what is presented to you by the applicants. Um, if you're gonna view a property, it needs to be entirety of the board who goes together to do it, that, I mean, that's driving by us.
Yeah.
I guess, driving by on the, on the street.
You can't talk about it.
No.
We can walk around and, and observe, but we can't talk.
But you, then you can talk about it in the meeting.
Right.
In the meeting, you can, yes, but the point is, all these to.
Point in.
Or a case on the, on the, and I have a public.
Does that have to be a public meeting? When they go, is a public.
But the public doesn't, you don't necessarily have to be entitled to go into the property. But it is, it's like a jury view, you know, you take your jury out to the site, they can look at whatever, same thing.
They, so we have to give public notice.
Yes.
Well, then if it's public notice, can they talk while they're at the site?
If the public is, uh, yeah, if there's a record of it.
Right.
And the public is allowed to be present when they're talking, right, I think it's better not to.
Like to mic all of you up.
What about, what about a project that's already come through this stuff, that's under construction, can we talk about those projects together?
Once.
Is anything pending before you relating to them?
No, so this project that came through six months ago, we voted, it's all approved moving forward.
Yeah.
Can we stop out with a board member to that, uh, majority and look at the construction?
Yes, and, and if it's not before you.
I would, this, this, this is a very good point, and I was gonna bring it up.
This is after it's been before, we've already voted.
One, one, that's right, once we.
Something pending, right.
Once it's out of our jurisdiction, because the decision has been made and it's in construction, then we. Then you and I, if we go to, to look at a building that's, it's no longer in our purview, so we're just citizens.
Right.
Talking about it.
Right.
Now, even if we talked about the case when it was before us. That case has already been closed, so can we talk about that case once it's all been closed and it's, it's?
If you do not have a pending application before you, and there isn't going to be another one. You know, it's done.
Boom did, it's done, right?
Yes, yeah, you can talk about it.
Cuz I think that's, and why, if we're on, for, for a public here, why would we do that? Well, because we, there's so many things that come through and is submitted to us. That we are very interested in that they get followed through, and I've seen the examples that you know. That are, that are being built, it's like, well, look, this, this is why we have these challenges, and this is what we're trying to protect against, or this is a great detail. So it's, it's, it's good for the board, I think. To receive things to go because it's the reality we'll be working on.
You can also talk about them in a public meeting too freely.
Well, and that's something that I think we're gonna continue to talk about, and, and, and may might have, you know, certain.
But you have to be careful, if there's going to be another application coming before you for the same property and you know it, then no.
No, no, no doubt, and why, I think we have to be careful.
It has to be like, fine, and you're not, nothing's gonna be coming back.
No, I wouldn't make a habit of it, it's very rare.
But I, I think there's, but. There's also, there's all sorts of stuff that gets built and it's like, you know.
But I think you guys do a great job of, you know, I can't drive every single street all the time, and you guys do a great job of calling me and. Many, many times, we can improve it retroactively. Without having to drag them through another board, you know, a reprimand. I, I, you know, we're trying to, Matt's been really awesome about. Helping me feel okay about navigating that mediation on projects that. Are missing something, but like. We're gonna bring them all back to the board for every single little thing, I don't know.
No, 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 but.
Especially in architecture.
Yeah.
And we're done, we voted, it's all done, and it's like, whoa, what's going, what's this, what's going on?
We have, we're changing our workflows, before Strickland Academy, I would like a designal. Uh, final design review verification. I've talked to my inspectors about getting a rough design review verification, AKA if there's a window that's supposed to be there and the homeowner decided they don't want the window there. I've instructed Brock and tell his inspectors to fail their framing inspection if the window was missing. Um, and then they will have to come to me and find out why they failed, okay, so things like that, if there's a deck that's massive. But then I was gonna ask if there are any volunteers. Final designer review verification comes, because eventually in my workflow, before they get their final file. They will have to have, if, if they've gone to, and I can do this in our software, i- it's an if then statement, if they went to ARB, BZAP or MA, minor architectural. They have to have a final designer verification before they get their final inspection.
I, I, I would be happy, I would be happy too if it could rotate.
I could do backup, yeah.
No, just rotate, like.
That's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
One month it's you, next month it's you, next month it's me.
Quick eyes, I'm, I'm drawing, drawing.
Are we talking once a month or are we talking more frequent than that?
I mean, they, I haven't dove into that yet, I, you know, we had. Two hundred and two building permits issued in twenty twenty three, I don't know how many of those. I gotta run those reports and figure out how many went to ARB. And then that would give me, and when you decide, when you distill that down, that'll tell me how many you guys should see, maybe. I mean, maybe fifty, I don't, I don't know, it would be.
Just distribute, make sure none of us have more than.
It would be essentially all your ARB applications.
Yeah.
At all, honestly, so.
Well, that's.
But they don't all get done and within the year, you know what I mean, so.
I would be happy to do that as long as, when we're asked to make that review, that we're not having to go back and. Find all the information from the ARB decision.
No, no.
It would all be right there.
This is, this is gonna be an open topic, we have to have legal to.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous about that, but.
We've already voted and approved and bringing us back.
I was just gonna ask, is there liability?
Okay, that's fair, that's why I brought it up, cuz you're here, you can, you can instruct. Okay, well, let's, we'll dive into that.
Yeah.
But I'm just letting you know, that's, that was on my mind, it's like, could I get a, could I get a volunteer to, but go with me, cuz.
But wait a minute, I, I mean, if we've already rendered our decision. Then can't I, as a, just a citizen practicing architect, do the review for the city?
Do an administrative review for the city?
Yeah.
You're doing a field review, compliance?
No, it'd just be, it'd be, looking at the ARB, what was presented to ARB and looking at the permit drawings.
That's what you're talking about, I think you're talking about doing a field review.
So we go to the house, we'll get two drawings, promise, you say, oh, the column detail, I know you love column details, column details aren't right, Matt. You, okay, we, they don't get their final inspection until the column details change, or whatever it is.
Yeah, so you're, you're going, you're just really going as an expert, not as a decision maker.
Exactly.
I'd be the decision maker.
Yeah, yeah.
But in, in any case, all of this is being, is happening after the decision was rendered by our body.
And when we like build, you wouldn't call, you wouldn't call the applicant and say something, or the builder, you'd call, you would flag it and we would take care of it.
Come to me.
And, and to be honest, it's already happening, cuz that's how I find out, I thought a lot of them, it's just, it's kind of a cooperative, yeah.
Okay, they, they, they're like, let's not, pay by us, and I bring it to the cities, I saw much.
Yeah, no, that's right.
I, I live in a community.
I want it to be on purpose. You didn't do it on purpose, I don't want you to drive by and go, oh, like, I want it to be on purpose, only purposeful.
Yeah.
So they can be an expert.
They can be consultant.
Consultant to me.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that, there's a lot of stuff that we re- remand to.
Decision maker with an administrative staff function. What I'm saying.
Gotcha, yeah. Cuz I'll be the decision maker.
It would be the administrative staff function.
And if people are willing. Cause he lies.
You are the administrator.
The consultant, giving it best.
Gotcha.
Right, no, that's not the way it works.
You're implementing.
Your, your face tells me, I don't understand.
We'll talk later.
Alright, so you're having, uh, yeah, well, however that works for field review, but. What about when ARB renders a decision, this is my last question. Uh, when, when ARB renders a decision. And a lot of times that'll go to Karen for doing, you know, we remand it to the design consultant to work out these details. Um, is there a, an opportunity after you've worked with the applicant? Well, it's no longer the applicant anymore, cuz that, we've already rendered our decision, so they're just working with staff. And. Do we, when the permit drawings are issued after you've done all that work, is there a chance for. You know, us as citizen expert witnesses to review at that point?
I would say table it if you feel like that's necessary.
Table it?
Yeah, to the next month, I would say, don't pass it to me if you, if you're not comfortable.
You're saying construct, do construction drawings match to ARB before they go to build?
Right, before they go to build.
That, that's her, that's her.
Three, oh nine.
And, and kind of, and kind of me too, I think comes to me for zoning first, I actually do look at the architectural stuff.
And we actually talked to Barica about that too, because we had one recently that was totally like built, not in compliant with what was approved. Some of the drawings were inconsistent, so you can see how one person could have slipped, but now we also talked to Barica about, like, just, you know, we know you, you're really good at. Construction details, but can you also keep it on your own design and we're flagging each other in a, in a different way?
Because a lot of times, design is tied to other liability issues, you know, code issues.
Right.
My, my, my pet peeve over the last appears is the details in these applications, so we're proving a right there. But there's no, there's some note or two, and I still think they're good light. Right, but that was approval from us, it's a design approval, is, is just a drawing, when they start to do the. Construction drawing, all that detail is put in, and we never see. So I'm pushing, I'm gonna continue to push for more dimensions, even slopes of roofs, heights, just, so there's some quantitative things then. We can compare to construction drugs that I have to have.
Right.
I, I think it's been too loose, I know, a nice hand rendering is beautiful, it's fantastic, I love the design. But there's nothing in there that I can grab onto, this is, it doesn't comply, cuz it's close. But if, well, we had to change it because it didn't work, our render is.
So.
No, no specific example, but, so I think as, as a board, we're gonna continue to push for.
And, and, I'll, I'll say to that, I've already talked to Karen about it, and I know my goal is to have a template. For architects and or homeowners and say, this is what a good drawings that looks like.
Yeah.
To ARB, this is what it goes in, we don't have any, you know, we take off the title blocks and we don't have anyone, we can't, we're not gonna pony one, but like, this right here. And you guys check it and you say it's got roof slopes, it's got this, it's got that, this and. You know, whether they do it on a graphing paper and it's a homeowner or it's an architect, they have all the information on the drawing that we wanna see and they can download off our website and say, oh, that's. Okay, I gotta have all these things, and then allow my staff, because Robin's eventually gonna check stuff when they come in, it's just a check, do you have X, Y, Z? Yeah, so, that's, that's, we've talked about it and that's a goal.
Colors, colors, all those things.
Absolutely.
Can we as a board in a retreat review that with staff?
The checklist?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would love to.
Specific to a project or check?
No, just to check, like template check, yeah, I would want you to.
So for instance.
Yes, it's your, it's your checklist. To be honest, I, I care, but I, I, I would care that you care, I, I care what you want, I, it's not for me.
It's just, yeah, it busts, it busts the data into the drawings, getting approved, it's on file, letting approved documents, then it gives you something to compare.
Yes.
Much more than just a pretty rendering and trying to decipher that into construction drawings, it's difficult, it can be difficult, so.
Does your new design include columns? Yes, please include details of column bases and capitals for ARB review. Well, that should be in there also.
So, well, that, I have this, and you guys did this with me years ago. And I.
But it's shocking.
So here.
You, you, you people that come in all the time.
Yeah.
Have slowly migrated to this, but it's just like.
Well, this is a huge different direction from what our board was doing just even five years ago.
Right.
That was not, this, this was like the opposite of what our board chair was saying about our group, saying. What, we just review, you know, for context and, you know, roof shapes and, you know. But to go into actual detail was something that was not. Driven, driven for this group, so this is, this is.
Again, that, again, I just wanna say one thing when it comes to this and, and I'm done, I promise, but, so, so I'm going through our, our forms. Our forms, like fencing forms, it, it's, it's all jargon at the bottom that nobody ever reads, it's, it's, it's the, it's the affidavit that you scroll through all the way to the bottom, you hit. Check, yep, I read it, okay, that's what happens, I, I can, it happens with fences, it happens with all of it. I'm, I've already revamped the fences, my goal, I gotta revamp the ARB forum, so they have to check each box, and it's an if then, if.[1766.04] If, if you do are modifying a roof, you have to have the roof slope, what is the roof slope, and things pop up. It's gonna take time to get there, I've already changed the fence thing that they have to check each box that they have read it, it's not one checkbox at the bottom, they have to check all of them. So good side out, it's gonna be this height, like you have to read it to check it, or else we won't accept it, they have to check it, they have to, they have to do eight checks instead of one check. So, I'll get there, but that's where we're going with it, that's where we're headed.
I love it, and they even had a whole process, right, cause I think one of the strange things, right, the application years ago, is it assumed I knew if it was gonna be DZA or not. Like, if I was gonna need a variance, and ninety-five percent of the applicants don't know.
Right.
Right.
The SADI architects and people, they know, but most people have no idea.
Yeah.
Right.
And it was, they, they. But it, but it was just kinda like, the assumption was you could know and use me, follow that.
This is kinda true, every jurisdiction, I gotta say.
For example, some of this in terms of like reviewing the details, it's next story, like we saw some renderings, but. How that kinda boils down to details and everything, there's a lot to do, that's a big project, there's a lot to be said there. And, and I'm, I'm concerned about that, I'm concerned about how that's been good at.
Well.
Well, it's coming back to you.
And, and, and that's, that's a huge improvement over what our, what the BZA used to do and what ARB when we first started used to, where. You know, I, I love our board chair, but he would say, um. You're done, like that, we're, we're done with the review, now it goes to staff and they can work out all that stuff, but you should be able to just sleep at night knowing that. You've done what you were required to do for an ARB approval.
Well, the whole, the whole process has come a long way.
Yeah.
I mean, I wanna remind you guys that twenty four years ago when I started, we didn't have architecture review, anyone could do anything. I mean, it is amazing how far.
Well. And I, I'd just like to mention, I'd just like to mention that we had a, we had a historic preservation working group meeting and we had the. The head of the state preservation office in attendance with other experts from state preservation office and they were amazed at. How much our ARB does.
So just to give you a little bit, to expand on that a little bit, I don't wanna take up too much time, cause we really need to also, I need to cut through a couple administrative things right before you guys leave. We, we, they have a checklist to, to complete a certification for historic. Um, designation, I'm not gonna go into the details, uh, we will eventually, and we, I did receive the checklist. When we kept talking about our process, we're pretty convinced that we have almost everything on that checklist. It's just not packaged to get certified, and I know that I got the checklist, I think we probably do. Um, I just, I, and I'll say a couple more things and then I'll shut up, I, I wanna set up another workshop for this group. Um.
With Catherine?
No, I mean, a candy.
I will say, I, I'm gonna say this to you, my contributions for the architectural information are. Uh, worthless to you, I mean, I am not an architect, I love to stay in my lane and I love to give Karen her life.
For us to stay in our lane too, so that's why you're here, I think there's just more procedural things and things that.
Well, the, the, there's a bigger thing, so, so, the, my main agenda item for the next workshop is, um, the. A guy named Trevor Fisher who owns Precision Slate, um, they're, they're, it's, they're implementing a slate preservation program. At Precision Slate Tile, and we're not in the business of supporting, you know, one or another business, but they came to us and said. Could we have an opportunity to present, do a slate tile education seminar, sit whatever, talk. To whatever group you want, and I think it would be awesome, he's gonna bring in every type of slate, he's gonna show us how slate is, you know, what needs to be done to have it. Um, uh, you know, put on the right way, how to determine if it's Pennsylvania slate, which we hear that word and it's like. We're done, um, so I would like to do that in October. I'm also gonna include in that a historic pres- the historic preservation committee and probably BZAP, just give them an option to send that, that. Um, did, but I thought I would start with you guys, is there a better time, is October good? And is there a date, time of day that?
I, I think. Fridays.
Friday, that what time do you guys prefer to like, just put out?
It's all over the map for me, ju- just put out a doodle.
Okay, I'll give like morning, noon and late afternoon and just.
So anything after ten thirty, eleven is perfect.
Okay.
I. I, I, I remembered what I wanted to ask, can I, real quick?
Yeah, but I'll finish really quick by just saying, I put, I, I have this readily available, I don't know why. It isn't in an easy accessible location on the city's website, we did this together as a board years ago, I thought it was. Um, but we will revise it, so I'll send this to you guys and you can make comments and, and I'll incorporate them and then we can have. A different meeting where we go over, we go over it and get it put up.
Um, this question is a simple yes or no. But when, when we, when we, when we are reviewing, I know. When we are reviews, I'm trying to make it as clear as possible here, uh, when we are reviewing a demo case. And it comes to the vote. Our ARB members required to state. Why they're voting yes or no on a demo. Individually.
Um, wait, say that again?
A member required just.
Are we required to? I mean, because, you know, we have, we have this whole thing where we go down and say his historically significant and worthy of preservation and you go to the next. And you have to go down the list. I find that there are, um, ways that, um, if I have to describe. Why I'm voting yes or no, based on this, 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 this and this. I feel like, uh, I'm under duress, because, no, because there are some where I, I can't verbalize it. Like, I don't have enough information and I feel like I'm about to make a statement that could be legally. Um, thrown out, because I didn't clearly state why on each of those items in the demo process. So why can't I just vote yes or no?
You can't.
Okay.
Here's what I would say about all of those things. Um, there's nothing in your code, I, well, I, no, I would have to say. See if your code requires findings, effects and conclusions of law, I don't recall that it does.
For demo.
For anything.
Oh. Cause we've always had that.
I know, and the reason, there's a reason for that. The reason is that a reviewing board or a reviewing court. Looks to, if you want deference to what it is you do, what they would say is you need to tell me your reason. You need to tell me why you decided what you did and I'll review that, but if you don't tell me anything. You're just a yes or no, there's no findings or conclusions in what you did. I'm gonna review it, what lawyers will call de novo. I'm gonna look at all the stuff myself, make my own independent decision and apply the facts as it was, that's the way a court would look at it. That's the way counsel looks at it on review, that's the way BZAP looks at on review. So the reason that Bexley has adopted that habit is because you've had good advice to say, if you're gonna make these decisions. And you want deference to what is you're deciding, you've gotta tell us what you're deciding.
I think.
Not just a blank, it's like when you're paying, you say to your parents, can I do something and they go, no, and you say, why not? And, and they're like, cause I said so, it's like that, we've all done that.
I think, we are there to help guide and prove, so saying no. I think giving our opinion on the design case, the demo case, because of the complexities of that, I totally understand where you're going.
It's very stressful.
The reasons that, that you believe support your decision, and you could not, but I can tell you that. BZAP has been appealed to counsel too, and sometimes there was one particular decision where counsel. BZAP gave no explanation as to how they looked at the code or why they did, it went to counsel, counsel has to give them deference and they basically said to them. And maybe even in their opinion, we would love to give you deference, but when you tell us nothing, there's nothing to defer to other than a no.
Well, that's the, I understand, that's the case.
That the garage?
That was garage.
I remember the garage.
That's the case that started us on giving reasons all the time, but that, like I said, you learn anecdotally, that's why we ask you for reasons.
Okay, but the way that this demo, you know, list is structured is that the burden. Uh, I don't, the burden on us to, you know. To, on our yes or no, to go through that list and sequentially show the reason why each step along the way. We say no.
Well, there isn't that statute.
Is it historically or architecturally significant and worthy of preservation? Uh, yes, okay, um, then, and then you go through. Reduction of property value, unreasonable maintenance costs, restoration, pres- preservation imposes unreasonable costs. And all I have on here is, how do we prove, how do I, how do we prove that? How can I vote on that if I can't prove it?
So Bill, that, that ordinance that Karen has outlined for everybody, doesn't say you have to find every factor. It is, here are the standards that you have to weigh and consider in making your decision. One, it could be two, if you can articulate, what, what a reviewing authority is looking for. Is for you to articulate your reasoning.
And for me, it's, the applicant has approved those, and I, I don't feel that there's a preponderance of evidence.
And you can say that, yeah.
Uh, and so, yes or no? Cause I, I gotta do it recently, and I went into depth of answering all these different things and I, and I found like that's how I needed to not be through that. I, I'm probably gonna change my approach.
Yeah.
All I need to know is, has it been proven to me or not, and, and that's, there's a yes.
Right.
And that's, and I can say that, the evidence is, I, I weigh the evidence, I don't see proof here that this justifies.
If you could articulate some reasons, what, your major reasons why, that's helpful to the reviewer.
No, I, I agree, cause if he gets appealed, knowing that it couldn't get appealed is.
And that's essentially.
And I understand why.
When you said there's no prosecutor to the board, that, that is, that, that is, well, I remember, I, I got probably five or six on counsel. And I, and, and she was saying we didn't have anything, and it's like, okay, well, what were you thinking, like, what, so you need that.
Can't read them, we carry your mind.
Right, that's why.
And I understand, and it's important that we promote that message, even on our recommendations, and, and why we want things remanded, we're very careful with our findings.
And you know, BZAP does the same thing, they understand it, they've been reading it, we're not saying a reason, just one, Bob's the only lawyer on BZAP. Uh, no, Ryan and Ryan.
Yeah, I think it's cool. No, there's a couple lawyers on it.
Heidi.
I was the only architect when I voted.
That may be, but anyway, but, but for example, when BZAP does a variance, they have seven factors to consider, they don't have to find all of them. They just have to find on balance. You know, does it support, and they are pretty good about articulating, on balance, we think.
Well, let me ask, I mean, just to clarify, we do not need to explain, I mean, we can help by saying it, but if we don't, but that only. Is the case if there are no findings of facts and decision of the board, you know, at, at the end, if it's, if it's not a de novo situation.
One thing that, that you could do is, and some boards do, is they make a motion, I knew that we deny the permit. For the reason that, you know, I don't know, whatever it is, it's architecturally significant because of A, B, C and D. And it is historically valuable to the community because C, D and E, you can pick your reasons and the whole board can vote on those reasons. The problem is with your board, it's hard for me to, when I hear the conversation. I mean, a- and even among yourselves, I'm not sure you always agree on all those things, which is fine, it's not what happened, that's why you're a board. But if you can, if in the motion you can articulate the reasons you find, the board can vote on it in that way and have those reasons articulated. But that would, I think a lot of times when you're making a motion, is. You're reading, you're trying to read consensus, maybe you don't know, I don't know, but.
I think on demos, especially because there's now been a more recent precedent, is being very clear, the position of why the answer no.
As a board.
As, well, as a board, but as an individual who's, was being oriented, the minutes are being taken up, you know, I think it's important to say. I'm not in favor of this because of this, or this is my reasoning for.
In discussion, but I don't think we should have to, when it comes to the vote, you know.
Go into an explanation of that?
Yeah.
I know, well, I think once in the discussion, yes, but when we're voting, we should have to say, I vote this and this is why, I agree.
Which is what, which is what we have done in the past, and I find that very.
I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Personally.
The, the board speaks to its motion, so if there's, there are reasons that everybody agrees to, I would articulate, encourage you to articulate them in the motion.
In the motion.
In the motion, yeah.
I also.
Finding the fact.
As the finding, the facts and conclusions.
But, but we have been going a step further, we were going around and, okay, the motion's called, the second, and we're going around. And then every person was going into this.
And I think.
We just did that in BZAP.
Part of the reason for that is because just having a motion and voting on the motion without any explanation of reason, which is what was hap- which is the contrary of that things. Is.
We wouldn't do that, I mean, I think this is a great way to move forward, is to just have it in the motion, there'll be lots of deliberation, there'll be discussion.
Comments will come out, this is what I'm thinking, this is why, this is, I mean, I can say those statements in the discussion, but when we're voting.
And this is something our board is, we, we have to get better at this, is when we make the motion, we need to say it clearly.
But what if you have different opinions, like if three of you wanted yes and two of you want no, the motion. Can't necessarily.
This is.
You know, be a.
But we can deliberate about what the motion is going to say.
Yeah, but.
I think, help me out here, this is what Bob did and I thought it was great.
I think, I agree.
He, they rejected, they did not grant the variance, okay, that was one motion, okay? And then they went back and said, now I make a motion to, uh, do, do you re- the motion is made, I don't know how he said it. Do you reject the application, so if you said yes to the variance. Then you would say no to reject the application, right, you were opposite, and then you had to give a reason. Why you said no to reject the application, conversely, those that said no to the variance were rejecting the whole application. And they said yes, and then each board member went around and say, yes, I reject the application. And here's my reasons why, and then it was all in the minutes and it was, it was two, it was two separate motions, it was great, I was like. What did he just do there, and then I went back and I was like, oh, yeah, okay, he was getting it all on the record, because, so if it got appealed.
Historical precedence that we kind of.
Yeah, and so then I was like, oh, if it goes to the council, now council knows exactly why each board member rejected the application or would have accepted the application. Based on, cause it was a split vote, it was like three to four in favor against the variance, it was, so they had to go around, so I think maybe if, if in a case of demolition, you could say. We, you know, do you vote in favor of demolition, yes or no, and then you could go back and say, okay, now we're gonna go around the room and if you voted in favor. Do you reject the application as a whole, and then you say, you do that whole thing, I think maybe that could be in your rules or that should process. It really.
Cause again, mostly, or as a front function, it's not complicated, but there are complicated ones that have multiple factors, that we need to maybe split part of it. And if we have.
Thank you, Catherine, that was very.